Good evening, everybody. I'm Sean at 6 o'clock. Dee, if you'd note for the record that Councilman Perkel is not in attendance. All the rest of them are. It is December 11th, 2012. We are here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street. It's 6 o'clock in the evening and we're going to start our agenda off with an invocation being led by Mary Carden. She's a pastor at Brazos Covenant. Thank you for coming out, Mary. So if you would please rise, we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance and then the Texas flag.
For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor Mighty God Everlasting Father Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there will be no end. Father, we thank you especially this time of year for the privilege and the honor to live in Granberry, Texas. We thank you that you love this city and you love its people. So we simply ask you tonight, while we make decisions of our city, that you bless those who govern here, that you touch us with your heart and your mind for the good of all. And Father, I bless this council and bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
And join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hand the Texas flag, please.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Well, as this is the first and only meeting we will be holding here in December, it brings us to open-mic night, and we have a few requests to speak at open-mic. I want to remind you that during open microphone, you have up to three minutes to speak before council. Council cannot respond to any of your questions or queries, so this time I'm going to start off with the person who came up number one, and that's Kay Colerain. If you would, please state your name and your address and we'll start a clock for three minutes.
I'm Kay Colerain. I live at 202 South Crockett in the city. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I appreciate it very much. I cannot imagine what is wrong with the Opera House project. The city has taken two years to do nothing. The parking lot is unusable, and now the mayor wants to delay the project once more. For what? An orchestra pit? The current theater company is having difficulty paying the lease on Granberry Live, the electric bill, payroll, pay right fees, and now an orchestra? What in the world are you thinking? It's time to stop this nonsense. Let the contract be signed, stay in or under budget, and make no more unnecessary changes. Egos need to be put to bed. The square is in trouble, and it could completely die. Have you not noticed the empty buildings, the businesses that are in trouble, and the lack of traffic? I urge you to make the right decision for the Granberry Square, which is the heart of Granberry. This is your watch. I would hate to be known as the do-nothing city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Scott Young, 101 West Pearl, Mayor Pratt, City Manager McKeethan, and City Council. I'm here this evening to speak against any further delay of the construction and the remodeling of the Opera House. My wife and I have owned a business on the Granberry Square for over 20 years. We have owned and restored three historic buildings. We believe in the square and in its importance to the soul of this community. Its influence across our state for preservation and economic development is well documented. We have learned that our square is the model for all small towns across the state. I would like to offer a quick timeline of activities over the last 10 years, a line that has negatively impacted the square. The Methodist Church moved to the suburbs, leaving not only an empty building at the eastern entrance to the square, but removing a large number of people who regularly attended services, meetings, and activities here. The loss of that traffic reduced greatly businesses to local restaurants, especially Sundays and evenings. The county moved the courts and county clerk's offices to the west side of town. The move was necessary to handle the growing needs of our county, but again, the loss of pedestrians to the square was dramatic. People from Hood County were regularly on the square to handle business in the county clerk's office or for jury duty. This reduced exposure to the locals and reduced the number of people eating at noon at our restaurants or shopping on the square during jury breaks. The county courthouse has been closed, fenced, and was a heavy-duty construction site for over three years. While we're all proud of the resulting beautiful courthouse building, it cannot be denied that that restoration process negatively affected the square. The buildings on the square have a value unheard of in any other small town in Texas. During this time, our property taxes have increased every year. A year ago, a director of the Granberry Theater Company was contracted by the city with the promise that the Opera House would be opening in June of 2012. I first learned of the plans for renovation of the Opera House three years ago, three years ago. Delays and indecision lead us to where we are today. Two different January dates were touted to begin the restoration process, but were stopped and delayed by council votes. A large group of Granberry and Hood County residents raised money plus extra to give the city the St. Helens Building. The rejection by the council of that generous offer was divisive to the community and negatively affected possible philanthropic efforts for other projects. The committee selected to plan this restoration included two architects, the city manager and a theatrical consultant. We've all heard the stories of the months of meetings leading up to tonight's discussion. Now we hear that this committee was incompetent and that the plans are unacceptable? There was no stronger supporter of the St. Helens Building project than me, but now it's time to complete this project. Most of us who have committed to the historic downtown area and attempt to create an income there believe the opening of the Opera House again as a destination will be a major boost. Accept the St. Helens Building if it is offered alongside the theater, but do not delay this project any longer. There may be some needed changes and tweaks to the plans, so make those changes and go forward. Do not go backwards in this project. It's time to set aside personal agendas and egos and complete the Granberry Opera House project by June 2013. One thing more that I didn't write down, I have had 18 phone calls in the last 24 hours from members of an organization I lead. Not one of these people support one day's delay. Every one of the phone calls I received said, "Get going and get it done." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Charlie Peoples? State your name and your address and we'll start the clock, sir.
Charlie Peoples. I live at 2612 Waters Edge Drive, and quite frankly, I am exhausted with at least once a week seeing an article in the Hood County News saying there's going to be a reconsideration of the Opera House project. As the previous gentleman said, it's time to get on with this project and get it completed. Over the last several months, I've heard a lot of accusations about who was responsible for the delays, and the person that was most often blamed is no longer on the council, so gentlemen, it's time to move on and get this completed and sign this contract.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lee Pickens?
I would also like to speak to the Opera House renovation. My name is Lee Pickens. I'm a citizen of Granberry residing at 1609 Catalina Bay Court. I'm 82 years old, moved to Granberry six years ago, becoming a part of Granberry's fastest-growing age demographic, 65 and older. While the city's growth rate during the last decade was 40%, the over-65 population grew at a rate of 53%. We account for 26% of the city's total population and 32% of the eligible voting populace. I believe that as a group, we are in favor of public taxpayer support of the Granberry Opera House and its theater company. However, our tax-paying pockets do have bottoms. To reduce the proposed seating capacity and seat revenue potential of the Opera House by 15 or 20%, to accommodate an orchestra pit for which there is no need is an extravagance we cannot afford. Theaters in Durango, Colorado, and Branson, Missouri operate successfully without orchestra pits. If anyone thinks that grand opera or ballet productions that require orchestra pits are coming to Granberry, they live in fantasy land. The Opera House Theater Company has not in the past and will not in the future be financially self-sustaining. In addition to theater company productions, other revenue-producing uses for the Opera House should be studied. Renting of the facility for church services and business, convention, and civic group meetings are possibilities for increasing revenues. Reducing the number of seats in the Opera House would likewise reduce its suitability for any such alternative uses. I urge the council to move forward with the current plan for the Opera House renovation and to reject any proposed changes, especially the addition of an orchestra pit, which should more appropriately be called the money pit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no other speakers for open-mic, so we'll move on to deliberation items number one. I would like to point out that the consent agenda item, the minutes have not been finalized yet from the November 27th meeting. So taking us down to item number one, we're going to open a public hearing for items number one and two at this time. This time I'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Martin Aguado to rezone from heavy commercial to industrial the property located at 2600 East Highway 377, being a 2.411 acre tract of the J. Stokely survey abstract number 523, East Park subdivision block one, lots one through five, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. We'll also open a public hearing for item number two regarding a request of Martin Aguado for a specific use permit for 2600 East Highway 377 to allow the use of a brick-stone company sales outside storage or stone yard on block one, lots one through five, East Park subdivision, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. Council members, I would like to point out that this did receive some contesting. As a result, it will require a supermajority vote for approval of either one of the items. We'll consider first item number one, which is the rezoning. If it doesn't pass, there's no need to move on to item number two, which is the SUP, but it will require four votes in the eye to make a supermajority vote. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to tell us what we have before us and why it would be even considerable to think of rezoning from heavy commercial to industrial in this particular area of 377.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. This is the intersection, the northwest intersection of Business Boulevard and 377. You can see it denoted by Green Star on our comprehensive plan. You can see also on the comprehensive plan, the comp plan denotes this as commercial activity only. It does not denote this as industrial. So if you do deliberate tonight and find that industrial is suited for this particular piece of property, you need to make specific findings, as did the P&amp;Z, and we'll go over those findings for your consideration very shortly. The property in question is delineated in blue, kind of a light blue teal color. It encompasses platted property that's already recorded at the courthouse. It largely is a vacant site. It did have a building on the property, which has since been demolished. Again, the image over to the left, one of the deliberation points by P&amp;Z is proximity to another industrial-zoned area that was approved recently by council, I'll say a couple of years ago by council, with specific findings that that particular business, which was a drywall contractor shop, was suitable for industrial consideration, and council did pass an industrial zone near or proximate to this property. It's about 200 feet away lineally to the northeast, and that is in the inset over to the left. You can see the approximate location. The mayor mentioned that we did get a protest petition. It's from the adjoining property owner to the west. You can see it constitutes roughly 36% of the adjoining property in the notification halo. As the mayor mentioned, anything above 20% requires a supermajority vote or votes by council to pass both the rezoning application and the SUP application. An aerial shot of the subject property. We have a plat of the property, and then we have a site plan showing how the applicant proposes to lay out the site. As the mayor mentioned, a stone yard does require an SUP in industrial, so the applicant has two applications before you. The first is to change it from commercial over to industrial to allow for the consideration of the SUP. The SUP is for the stone yard. Now, one thing that the P&amp;Z did mention in their findings, or they mentioned two things in their findings, one was that there was no fabrication of stone on-site, no heavy materials or machines working on the site like any kind of assembly, is basically outside sales only. So they thought that the outside activity and sales constituted more of a commercial-type activity, and the second of which was it was near an established industrial zone previously approved by the city council. There's the southern portion of the site. As a part of the proposal, the applicant is wanting where the building was demolished to build a new building on-site. The elevation of the proposed building is in your agenda packet. You can see it's got a metal standing seam roof. It's got two tons of masonry or stone. Supposedly, in the deliberation at P&amp;Z, they said that they would be using the product they would be selling as kind of a display on the face of the building in order to help market their stone or their product. We do have, again, a parking plan that shows general compliance with the parking scheme based on the square footage of the building. And then lastly, as the mayor mentioned, the base zoning district has to be established for the consideration of the SUP. If the base zoning district fails, then council needs to deny the SUP as it's no longer applicable to the base district. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the two applications. First, the base zoning district as presented by the applicant at the P&amp;Z hearing, and then on item two, they recommended approval of the SUP with two considerations to be tied to the SUP. One, all loading bins shall be enclosed on three sides with stone to conceal the materials within the bin. Secondly, the outside storage of the stone and rock materials shall be on the pallets and not placed on the ground. Mayor, I believe that's it.
All right. As you heard, we have one protest. Is the party that's protesting, is that person in the audience? All right. Do you have any questions for Scott or staff regarding this? Gentlemen?
I've got a couple of questions.
Mr. Parsons?
Where's the drywall entity that you talked about? Where was that?
That is...
What, does it have outside storage or...?
It does not.
No.
It's inside the structure. It's on the east side of Business Boulevard, almost to, if you look at the inset over to the left, that gray block that shows it as industrial-zoned property, it's about 200 feet away, but you're right, Councilman Parsons, it's solely inside the building.
So it's behind Bennett's Camping Stores there?
It is.
And they have no outside storage?
There is no outside activity there.
What was the reason that was an industrial classification? Was it the nature of the business?
Just the nature of the business. It was not allowed, sort of like this one, it was not allowed by right in heavy commercial. And it was a drywall and plumbing contractor storage shop by definition. The applicant was Mr. C. B. Tanner.
And on the elevation of the proposed building, what are the, which way did the garage doors face? Do they face industrial or do they face that open bay? I assume that's an enclosed bay or it has a door on it, right?
The way this front elevation is positioned on the site plan here is the open bay to the right of the top elevation is toward the north of the property. That would be facing toward Business Boulevard.
So the open bay will be facing traffic coming westerly on 377? No further questions?
Scott, one question regarding industrial. Once it goes industrial zoning, there's lots of different activities that can take place in industrial zoning. Is there anything that stipulates that it can only be a yard for stone at this point?
No.
Once it's zoned, it's zoned industrial unless somebody changes it?
That's correct. Anything allowed by right can come in after.
And the applicant or the owner would have to be the one to request that rezoning to take it back away from industrial, is that right? The owner of the property?
Owner, the property owners generally rezone property, but the city also has the right to rezone property. However, when you get into downzoning property, then you get to other considerations for the property owner. But the city does have the right to rezone property, like we did in 2001. We rezoned the entire city.
And the only reason that P&amp;Z said that this was a good thing was because it was adjacent to a previously zoned industrial?
Well, that and...
Which was opposite of what the comprehensive plan stated?
Adjacent to one that was previously approved. Secondly, and they deliberated on this issue for about 10 minutes, was there was no fabrication or milling or breaking of stone. It was basically coming in pre-cut, set on pallets, and basically retail sales activity. So there was no heavy machinery operating on-site. The only heavy machinery that they discussed, and I know the applicant's here, he may want to clarify, would be the forklift unloading, loading and unloading the pallets.
All right. Anybody else have questions for staff or for the applicant?
I do too.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I don't own this industrial. What else could they put in there?
We actually tightened our zoning ordinance where a great deal of things aren't really allowed by right in industrial, but let me rattle off a few things, if I may. Portable building sales could go there by right. Private utility service yard could go there by right. Recycling center could go there by right. Roof and siding supply, tire retreading, warehouse and showroom with office, warehouse wholesale enclosed.
Mobile homes can go there as well, can't they?
Mobile home sales?
Yes. And industrial?
I don't believe they can.
Is it portable buildings or motorhomes?
Portable buildings, like the little tough sheds.
That's where we, we had the same thing come in for us last year, Mayor, I believe, on 377, a little further out.
Further out towards the edge.
You know, this to me is our gateway into our city and nothing wrong with the rock yard.
You're right, Mayor. The manufacturer at home, Hudco at home, display, sales, and service can go there by right.
But we're opening up here, let's say if they decide to sell it five years now or 10 years from now, they can put in a mobile home sales office there.
Correct.
They can put in shredding, tires, I think.
Tire retreading.
Yeah. And the other one that went in out there further, the rock yard, they did a great job out there, the other company, and looks nice the way they did their fence and everything, but just down the road, we'll have to look at.
Do you have any questions for the applicant? Like to get the applicant up here to speak to council, please.
Scott, I got a question while he's headed up here. Is this, is this an existing company in Granberry here somewhere?
Well, we'll be able to find that out from the applicant. Sir, if I could get you to state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Gino Anderson. I live at 110 Bayless in Hutto, Texas, 78634. The Aguado Stone is an existing quarry business. We own three quarries across the state. We, we've been in business since 1997. This, this area right here, Martine, the owner, I'm his operations manager here, Martine, the owner, has been doing business here. He actually was one of the first people selling stone here in Granberry, Texas. He supplied the stone for this building. You know, we have a lot of years of experience in the stone industry. We plan on, you know, we plan on making this place nice. We plan on making it to where people are attracted to this area. One of the things we found really appealing with this property is just down the road you have nurseries. There's two different nurseries, just hop, skip, and a jump from where we're located at, and they're kind of in our field as, as what we do. You know, we, we understand that this area is, I believe, 80% masonry required on the outside. One of the ideas that we were shooting for is marketing outside of Granberry and bringing more people in. That's, that's, this is a centralized area to where all three quarries are located at. So this, this makes it a real optimal area for us to operate.
Well, I don't think anybody's against your line of work by any means. It's just the fact that if we open up that particular slice of pie and rezon it as industrial, there's a whole gamut of operations that could come into that area. And you heard that list. That list is pretty lengthy, and it travels with, with the land, so it does, it's not just what you're going to do, but what the next generation of landowner is going to do with that property.
We would be happy to, if you, if, if council could put a clause in there as to if we, let's say worst-case scenario, we don't make it, if you put a clause in there to where it must be zoned heavy commercial, we will apply for that and, and change that back at your will. We, we believe that we're going to be successful here. We believe that we're going to bring in a lot of business, a lot of taxes. We believe that we're going to be good for Granberry.
Let me ask a question, because I see somebody listed as the property owner as Jose Espinoza.
Yes.
That's not you, though?
No. Jose, we are, we are in the process of purchasing this out from Jose Espinoza. He was going to, he was going to pursue this. He, however, got tied up and just didn't pursue this option, and we have been in the market for opening up a stone yard for about the past three years, and you know, it's not an easy decision to make. And you know, this is, this area is prime for us. This, this area is, once again, centralized to where we're located at. For us to palletize it and fill up the stone yard is not going to be difficult for us, and we believe that we can bring, instead of, instead of your potential customers going down the road and coming from Dallas, coming from Fort Worth, and stopping down the road for that specific market, we can bring them further into your city. And you've got your, you've got your nurseries right here. We, you know, we feel that we're going to fit in just fine. We, and as stated, we're not going to have heavy equipment out there. It's going to be real quiet running forklift, load and unload. There's not going to be any manufacturing done there. Everything's going to be prefabbed at the quarry.
Anybody else on council have questions for the applicant? Mr. Allen, you do?
Thank you. I don't think a nursery is industrial or zoned.
It's not.
Okay. But I do agree with you, it will fit hand in hand. Now, you're saying it's going to be a central location for y'all, or we're in a central location for y'all? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So y'all be delivering those rocks down here to store, and then they're going to be, will y'all be delivering them to Fort Worth or wherever they go?
One of our major, we plan on running, a lot like a commercial business. I mean, that's the idea of the stone yard. We plan on marketing and bringing people in. We plan on having people come in, look at the products. That's, that's the idea of the stone yard park. Walk around, find what you... Walk around, find what you like. And being in Granbury, there's so much construction out in this whole area. I mean, it's, it's not just Granbury, it's the vicinity is stretching out to Dallas, Fort Worth, and we can fill in a, we can fill in a void over there. So it's, we feel that we can bring in clientele over here.
I'm a businessman and I need all the business I can get, and I sure y'all would too. But here's my concern. There's no lack there, I believe, red light or anything like there, that location. When you're bringing 18-wheelers in and out of there, half of it's all up and down 377, so it's just not you, you know? But would you feel like y'all would be in danger there going in and out?
No. There's a back road. There's a back road. Going, going in would be rather simple and exiting would be, they could take a left and, and get on a more, they, they don't have to merge out right where we're at. There's, there's a, I don't recall the name of the, the road that's right behind us.
Old Granbury Road.
Old Granbury Road, okay. They, that's kind of where we were looking at, where they, they can exit out safely and not cause, not cause a stirrup. You know, on entering our facility, we, we were hoping that they'd use the main entrance.
I'm like the mayor, I like what you're doing, but if something happened or you decide to sell out, we got industrial there.
You know, like I said, we, we are, we, we have a quarry that's been in business since 97 that is backing this business up. You know, it's, 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 it's got a strong backbone. You know, we're, we're a strong outfit. We've been, we've been in business for a while and, you know, we're, we're not moving anywhere. You know, we're not, we're not going away anywhere.
I'm from Cleveland, Texas. I lived in, 18 years I lived in Virginia. And it grew up there and these nurseries go in and put in a big nursery, 30, 40, 50 acres. And 10 years later, they sold out for housing development or something like that. Just a little bit different. The money we all would sell.
The, the difference between us and somebody who's, if I was an average person opening up a stone yard, I would have to purchase the inventory. We own the inventory. We, we own it. Our, our overhead cost is not going to be what the average person would be. You know, we own the inventory. We make it, we send it over. And so this, this cuts the, the cost down. We don't have to spend as much as a, as a, somebody who's not in the quarry business would have to spend.
Any other questions? Mr. Parsons?
I have a couple, I have a question for Scott. What are our options? Can we stay heavy commercial and do an S U P? Or can we go industrial with the reversion on title transfer of the purchasing owner? Or what, what other options do we have?
Currently, we, our zoning ordinance basically only allows for brick and stone company sales outside storage with an S U P in industrial. But the applicant did bring something to bear, and you touch on a point, that he offered up to covenant that the city could initiate possibly a rezoning if the business ever failed or if the business property was ever vacated. We've done that once before that I'm aware of, and I need to pass this through the city attorney. If he's comfortable with that.
So we possibly make that a part, make that a part of the S U P or just?
Both the rezoning and...
It would have to be on both of them.
Yes.
I think the way we do that is to include a clause in the ordinance that provides for if you sell the property, the city comes in and automatically downzones it to each city. The other alternative I could see right now is if you don't, if you're not comfortable with zoning it industrial, I suppose that you could ask P&amp;Z to take a look at amending the zoning ordinance to allow an S U P in a heavy commercial zone. But that delays everything because you've got to go back to P&amp;Z to get their records made.
That's correct.
And that's your other option.
But again, that, what that does is provide parity for that change citywide. So if you actually take that back from industrial with an S U P to buy right, for example, in heavy commercial, then you can have these stone yards everywhere in heavy commercial throughout the entire city.
Would it be, would it require an S U P?
However, P&amp;Z and the city council wants to modify the ordinance. So whether it's buy right in heavy commercial or S U P in heavy commercial, whatever the, the P&amp;Z and council desires in that instance.
You keep the first good shit, do it, leave it industrial with a clause in there. If they sell, if they sold it, there's no problem.
And I'm working with what the applicant actually put to the podium as a suggestion, which this isn't being brought up by the city, but I think it's a good thing that's being brought up by the applicant, is that if he would covenant, the property owner, because only the property owner could sign this, would covenant that the city would have the authority to downzone the property back from industrial to heavy commercial and tie that to the adoption ordinance, that covenant.
The only issue I see is that the applicant is not the owner of the property at, at this present time.
Absolutely.
And so as such, they cannot basically downzone this because they're not the owner of the property. This is carrying, carrying a little bit of cart before the horse kind of a thing.
We, we are in the middle of signing the paper over. As far as actually having our name on the property right now, we do not. We have full blessings on the current owner. Mr. Martin Aguado has, he has sold his portion of another business that he owns to purchase this property. And that is Jesse Espinoza owned this property and this was part of the sale. And part of the division of another company, that company was Capital Stone Products. So it's, this property is Martin Aguado's, it's just a matter of doing the transfer of the name. And I'm sure Jesse Espinoza...
Would that be taking place? I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's the way I operate, so. Would that take place within 30-day period, sir?
We can make that happen within a 30-day period. We can make that happen.
Well, perhaps we could postpone this and, and take this back up in January? Let me look at a calendar.
And what, what would that solve other than having an owner that could covenant to revert?
That, that's what that would allow, is the owner would actually be able to do that.
Mayor, could we just tie it, tie it in our motion with the contract? It's only good for them when they buy it, not the original owner. We have, we rezone something if they don't own it anyway?
Well, we've done it before. Let me just say, we've done it before. The city has the right to rezone.
We could actually get both signatories, the current property owner and the applicant who is the long-term property owner, do that way, yeah.
If they don't sign it, it's not an option.
And we can actually refine the language, pass it through Stewart's office and get it to a point where we're comfortable the first Tuesday of next month.
I think you need to do that because I don't think you're going to get the vote tonight.
I, I think, I think postponing till January 8th, which would be our next meeting in January, would be the best thing to suggest to you, sir. Are you, are you okay with that? Because if so, I'm going to ask the rest of the council.
We're, we're okay with that. I mean, this is, we'll make this happen. We'll make the transfer happen. We got, Jesse Espinoza has already signed to make this transfer happen once. It's, he's not opposed to this.
The only covenant I, I want to throw out there in caution to you is that there is a contested vote on this. It does require at least four of the council members to approve this.
I, I understand. And then I, we, we feel that we can be a blessing on the city. That's, we...
With that being said, entertain a motion to postpone items number one and two until the January 8th meeting. Do you have a motion by Mr. Allen? Needs a second, please. Second by Mr. Couch. All in favor of postponing items one and two to the January 8th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Takes us to item number three. We'll now open a public hearing regarding a request of Tri-County Development Incorporated to rezone 4219 Old Granbury Road, being a 6.748 acre tract of the W.G. Terrell survey, abstract number 562, to amend the existing P.D. Townhome Plan Development District and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. Gentlemen, what this has to do with is a development that's located next to Ashley Oaks subdivision. There's currently a fence, a wooden fence constructed between this proposed plan development and the Ashley Oaks Plan Development. It's a stockade-style fence. In their original P.D., they were, the request was to develop a decorative fence going around three sides of that. They are now coming back and requesting that the decorative fence only face Old Granbury Road and that they be allowed to use stockade fences on the other sides, as is already in place on the side to their south, I believe, or west?
West.
To their west. I think that's pretty much what we have. Scott, you want to fill in all the details I left out?
What defines a decorative fence is the stone columns 25-foot on center, which was really tied to the P.D. as part of the development of Ashley Oaks. Along the common western portion of this property, eastern to the Ashley Oaks side, there was a built decorative stockade fence. They didn't want to tear that down. Deliberation at P&amp;Z basically highlighted the fact that there would be no public benefit along Old Granbury Road for the stone columns when it's hidden by houses. And they preferred instead to actually put the stone columns along Old Granbury Road and just the smooth decorative stockade fence along the east, west and south portions of the property. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the P.D. amendment with the conditions that you see before you, basically outlining that the decorative fence be placed along the front of Old Granbury Road and the two-sided decorative fence without the stone columns be on the east, west and south side.
Now, you've said a decorative fence twice. Do you mean a wooden stockade fence?
Wooden stockade, it would, yeah, decorative without the stone columns. But it'd be a dual-sided stockade fence.
Alright. Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the public want to speak on this item? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion to rezon 4219 Old Granbury Road by amending the existing P.D. TH district to allow for a modification on the fencing requirements and approve an ordinance for said rezoning.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett. Needs a second, though.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Does that take on any discussion?
Why with P&amp;Z or what? I mean, the motion from, the P&amp;Z approved it a little bit differently than that, I believe.
Well, P&amp;Z wanted to, alright. I, I think you bring up a good point, Mickey. They, they actually placed some restrictions onto it. Shall we, perhaps we make it to change to read as amended by P&amp;Z? As recommended by P&amp;Z. Do you agree with that, Mr. Hewlett?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Allen? Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of approval of the rezoning in accordance with the P&amp;Z recommendations, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us to item number four. As mentioned by several people during the open mic, this is one of my pet peeves, the Opera House, and I want to see it done right. I don't want to see us throwing $2 million of taxpayer dollars towards a project that winds up with a two-story building with a concrete stage, no box office, and then we turn around and call it a theater and expect a theater company to operate and be successful within that venue. Does it slow us down a little bit? We've had some discussion with Bill Scott of Scott Tucker. And Bill, if I can get you up here to maybe address some of the issues. I had proposed not necessarily an orchestra pit, as everybody seems to be highlighting, but a basement that when the stage apron is removed, you do have access to an orchestra pit. A basement would serve a couple of purposes. It allows you to have the building remain at grade. If we look at the current design, you're three feet above grade by the time you get at the back of the building. It does require additional ramps in order to gain access to the back of the building. It requires a lot more as far as the engineering is concerned, too. The engineering has been done. There is some questions that have popped up, and Bill Scott, I'm going to ask you to address some of those issues now that you've had a little bit more time to look at the plan and, and the design. And the reason why I want to see some sort of a basement is there's a lot of magic that takes place inside of a theater. And that magic can take place as a result of having props, set pieces, people, all that appear from out of nowhere. It's magic. And that magic can happen from underneath the stage. We're talking about an investment of bond fund monies. And I've heard it said several times up here, it's bond dollars. I have to remind everybody on council, bond dollars are tax-paid bonds. Your taxpayer dollars are paying off these bonds. Yes, you got the money as a bond package, but it all has to be paid back. And Bill, I'm going to ask you, do you see any value in taking the back structure down to a single story? And is there some cost savings that can be counterbalanced and say a break-even gain from a basement, which would allow some storage underneath?
Yes, sir, clearly.
Well, I don't want to lead the discussion. Can you tell me some of the things that, what your architect or designers, estimators came back because I saw in an email that you sent to Mr. McKethan, that you list a few issues with ADA? You list a few issues with the back wall tear-down and how it becomes one big structure again? Can you address those for us, please?
Well, yes, sir. There's a few issues with documents that need to be cleaned up, usual kind of procedure. And you see something you think that's questionable, you need to raise your hand. We've got the set of documents and there's clearly some things to clean up prior to saying you can go do something. We, we actually could go do several things and are willing to do so. I think there's some cleanup issues, but there's also some opportunities, so. The real problem from our side of the fence is finding some of the team that can say, "I can do it." And I understand the speed factor and the want to get going, and we hear you loud and clear, and there are several things we could go do while you're adjusting some of these things. There are clearly valid enhancements that we see, but based on the original documents that we've got a GMP on, there's flaws with that that need to be addressed. For instance, the, you have two buildings. You have a, you have a stage house addition and you have a theater, existing theater. One's 120 years old, the other one's going to be brand new when we finish it. Those buildings react differently to the soil, heaving, settlement, its issues, the water getting in the dirt, depending on the thing. Your stage house is going to move at a potential vertical rise according to your soil report about two inches. Your existing theater is 120 years old. It's probably settled and heaved all it's gonna. It's probably sitting on a hydrated line, kind of old footing from 120 years ago. Those move differently. Right now, the stage house is inset into the existing wall line roughly 18, 24 inches. That, that gives you some expansion issues. This building's going to react differently than this one. So typically, in my experience, you have a hard line that you build to. There's the, there's the theater, here comes the addition. Typically, there's a two, one to two-inch expansion joint assembly that runs around that connection, allowing each building to move independently. That's not what we got. We've got a set of drawings that's inset with a 5/8 inch joint, that basically looks like a drywall joint. That, that would need to be cleaned up in our opinion, along the lines of Schmagna, the Sheet Metal Association of America, and, and here's the catch, you have a roof, we're re-roofing the existing theater. You have a roof, we're re-roofing the existing theater. It's got a 20-year NDL, no-dollar-limit warranty on it. Um, there are rules to that warranty that says you have to, um, build the right base splashing details. Um, some of that is relating to kind of what I'm saying. You can't just slap a 5/8 inch expansion joint on the, on the new roof and say that the warranty's going to cover it, because it's not. Got to be, the expansion joint's got to be, allow the roof and the building to move like, uh, the soil report, and it's, it's going to. So, that, while it sounds like that's a huge problem, it's, uh, hey, wait a minute, move this stuff back over here. It can be, uh, stuff typically done on the fly with, uh, with what you're trying to build. We normally jump on it and say, "Architect, engineer, you've got a problem here. Need to move some things here, adjust some things, and here's why." "Oh, that's a good idea." Or, "No, you're thinking about wrong. Go shut up and go do this." Well, um, we have yet to have those discussions with a, uh, we haven't set our building team. We're to have an architect slash engineer on staff or onboard as a partner, a joint venture partner. We have four, five, six of them. We're looking for the guy that can say, "Yes, I can do it in a set amount of time." We talked about, uh, a duration the other day that doesn't seem palatable. So we have said, "You're not concluded. Who's next? Can you do it cheaper, faster?" And we're hunting that guy. We think we found a guy that says, "You know, we can minimize the impact. We may, uh, we may be building this job by a fax machine or email scans." But, um, well...
Well, let me interrupt you, because I, you, you mentioned "on the fly." In my mind, that means that we're going out there, we're breaking dirt, we're going, we're moving forward, we run into an obstacle. You say to the architect who's already there on the job site and the design guy, "Correct this." So it, whether, whether there were change orders that hit you that say, "Let's not do a concrete stage and let's go do a wooden stage." Say we blow off the basement that everybody seems to think is an orchestra pit. Say we blow that off, but we want to rake the seating to where the seating is raked down to where you wind up with, at a, a ground-level walk-in and all the way towards the stage, and then you have a one-foot rise up to the stage level. Is that something that can also be done on the fly?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You'd want a guy studying the theater line of sight, issues with, with the new seating, whatever that...
All right. So, so there are areas that can be addressed. We talked about the ADA aspect, that, uh, the design of the bathrooms as drawn are to old specs. They're to 1994 specs of ADA, whereas had it, had the project actually had the trigger pulled on it in March of 2012, it would have been okay. But as a result of the delay, we are now looking at having to answer to new specs. And they're not major, they're not major, but they do affect the existing drawings.
Yes, sir.
Are we talking a two-month delay just to redraw that? Or are we talking about a couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks tops.
Right.
There's some layout, general layout issues. Uh, it's not any thing that's out of line for the normal kind of renovation, should I...
I mean, my hope for this whole project is by the time we finish, we have a viable theater. And I hope that the rest of the council wants that. I mean, it's hard for me to see spending $2 million on something that the existing company gets into, and then they can't produce shows that operate at a profit because they're limited capacity. They don't even have a box office in the current drawings. I mean, what, are we talking major delays in pushing the lobby back a little bit to allow for a box office within that space?
No, sir.
I, I just, council members, I just think we're rushing into this. Even though it sounds like we've been delaying for years, the issue is the drawings just now got to us. The drawings were just now presented to us by a company that winds up not being able to be the builder. And so then we throw the drawings towards somebody else and say, "Can you build it?" Of course, a construction guy's going to, first thing out of his mouth is say, "Hell, yeah, I can do it." Because it can be drawn, it can be built, and you tackle the obstacles as you go along, just as you heard, on the fly. But do, but do you wind up with what we really need, which is a viable theater at the end? Go ahead, Tony, you've got things to say.
Talking to me, Mayor? Thank you, sir. One thing, Mayor, I guess where a lot of people got the orchestra pit was in your email you sent to D. It says very clearly in there, "Opera pit." But regardless, the mayor asked you about the laytime, but never asked you about the cost. What's going to cost the heck of this?
No, sir.
Okay, no cost. Okay. Bill and Mr. Scott, last meeting we had, I asked you, could you do the job? You looked at the drawings. Did you, and I think, how, when did you, first time, do you see these drawings?
Uh, the one that's our contract's based off of, uh, I'm going to say around first of September, maybe?
So you've had them since September? And when I asked you last meeting, I said, "Mr. Scott, can you build it with those drawings?" And you said, "Absolutely."
Yes, sir.
I said, "When can you get started?" You said, "Monday."
Yes, sir.
It's been a few Mondays since last meeting, and I haven't seen anything overdone. Is there a reason for that?
Well, yes, sir. I don't have a permit. I don't have a, I haven't submitted my bond and insurance, and I don't have a notice to proceed.
Then how could you get started on that Monday?
Well, hypothetically, you, presuming that you have a building permit, a notice to proceed...
No, I'm not the one that said it. You were, Mr. Scott.
Sir?
You said, "I'll start Monday."
Uh, okay, I must have miscommunicated that to you, sir. You don't start until you have a building permit.
But here, here's, here's my concern. You've, you've looked these plans, we have Terry Combs, which I want to talk to next, on the city payroll to figure all this stuff out for us. And when did we catch this before? I just got the fax in yesterday. When did we catch all these things before?
There's several things I can guarantee you we haven't caught yet, sir. Uh, I'm not an architect or an engineer or...
You've got them on your firm, though, right?
No, sir. We do not have one, uh, architect or engineer in our payroll. We're a general contractor, construction manager, joint venturing with an architect slash engineer to comply with the requirements of the contract.
All right, but when I asked you last time, you said you'd talked to, uh, Brian Gaffin's people?
Yes, sir.
And they were going to come onboard with you?
Yes, sir. Uh, that got poisoned real quick.
All right. Well, let me...
We went to another guy.
Take one.
And he couldn't, then we went to another architect for him, and he couldn't meet the schedule, which we detect from, you know, the pulse of what we're hearing. It's a hurry, 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 get started. We're not just looking for an architect that can fix things. We're looking for an architect who can fix things on the fly to, to accommodate what the city's telling me of, "Hey, get out there and get going, man."
And by what you're telling us then is you're real glad that you, uh, didn't make a deal with who Mr. Gaffin used for that, right?
I'm not saying that.
Well, I mean, it's wrong or not? Or their drawings wrong?
I'm getting a little lost, but...
On the back, back here, where they're taking the back wall out?
Uh-huh.
You said in, in the email that they, that it was, he was going to do some more bracing. Your engineer didn't feel like it was correct. Is that right?
Uh, well, I can tell you that I don't feel it's correct.
But you're not an engineer.
No, I'm not.
So you're getting...
The, 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 the detail you're talking about, Mr. Allen, is a, um, you've got a 120 wo, 120-year-old wall that's about 35 feet high. It is, uh, to be taken down and piloted and returned to the city yard. The, um, structural, uh, the new structure of the stage house is, um, I think intended to brace those existing walls. You knocked the short end out of a shoebox, and you've got a couple of walls kind of flopping in the breeze there, basically held together by an existing roof. Um, you can't do that. You can't take this wall down without actually bracing it beforehand because the details of the structural that we have and the drawings we have don't show you how to do it. Now, you can figure out some kind of thing. My, my, uh, my thought is to, uh, slap a couple of columns, build a stone pilaster around those walls, stiffen those walls, and say, "Those walls are hard and they're strong and they're square, and that's the, that's what we're going to bring the addition to." I think they could be done, engineered, in less than a week.
Okay. Mr. Combs didn't catch that either?
I don't know.
Mr. Coen is, is our project manager to oversee it. He's, he's not...
He oversees the drawings, too, Mayor.
He, but I think you're, never, never mind.
I'm not either.
Never mind.
Thank you, sir. Bill, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
You said at the beginning of this deal, when the mayor asked you about, could you dig the pit underneath, or we'll call it pit, the basement? You could do it at no extra cost. Is that correct?
If we are allowed to redesign the stage house, uh, addition, yes, sir.
What are you going to have to cut out?
Well, um, you have basically a 36-foot-high T-shaped building that's 36-foot-high all the way around it. Where that high volume is needed, basically, and Andrew probably can tell better than I am, is at the stage. That's what supports the fly system that the, used as the backdrop and the scene, in the stage. The, uh, areas beside those, uh, beside the stage are high volume or nothing that we know of. So we would say, kind of like, um, what the mayor's saying is, "Hey, reduce those heights to a single story, take the money for them, and use them on enhancements that you really want to put into the job."
So that would be cheaper than saying, putting the second floor up for storage?
Uh, reducing the height of the building, adding a foundation or a basement system underneath the stage would be cheaper than adding a second floor to the stage area?
For the same area?
Uh, no, it'd probably be more expensive.
Really?
Well, it's, it's a pretty big credit coming down, taking all that stone and load-bearing CMU, okay? And that's your money. We'd take it and say, "Okay, here's X number." It's a $2.2 million job. Basically, you said there's a 1.1 outside and there's 1.1 inside. If you can reduce the 1.1 on the outside to what you need is a stage house proper, then you've got excess dollars that you can say, give them a, uh, dressing room and a metal single-story building out behind that connecting to it.
Metal building?
Thousands of ways to do it.
Did you say metal?
Uh, metal with a stone, some kind of stone veneer.
Okay. So what, what is, uh, what's, what's, what are you knocking off? What you're knocking off, what you're saying? What's the dollar figure on that?
On what?
On what you're knocking off? If you go down to the single story and do it what you're saying, what is the dollar figure on what we're knocking off the back?
I don't know, but it's, it, it would be significant.
How do you know it's a, it'd be a savings or the same?
Well, I guess my, uh, intuition as a builder.
I know, but I don't like playing chess.
Well, I'm, I'm probably, uh, telling you that there's not going to be any of that.
Well, we don't know what the cost's going to be, but we know it's going to be the same, or saving.
Same or less. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but that's not a real good answer.
I'm sorry. I don't want to tell you.
No harm.
And I don't believe in it. Sir?
I'm sure these other guys...
You done, Mr. Allen?
Sure.
Are you done?
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Parsons?
Uh, on this, uh, in, in your email, this item three, "The proposed finished floor elevation of the building addition is approximately three feet above existing grade. There's no design in place to deal with the grade difference differential to allow access between the building addition, parking lot, and city sidewalk." What's that mean? You're going to have to redesign ingress and egress? Are you going to lower that to meet that or...
Well, I'm, I'm, I was not privy, we were not privy to the, uh, original programming slash criteria from, you know, city. So, uh, we, uh, had heard from the prior designer that the city was going to remodel the parking lot and raise the grade back there. I don't know if that's true. Uh, it could be easily handled with adding a retaining wall and some ramping areas. We might get in some pavement or some parking areas that you might want to not give up. There's several ways to fix those kind of things. But yes, your plans right now are three-foot differential between your stage elevation and your parking grade out, right outside the exterior, uh, canyon.
So does that create some, uh, uh, nice drainage issues for us on the southwest corner of that building where it's, uh, got the T-shape and you've got a well there that the water's going to be pouring into?
Probably so.
Wow.
That's an opportunity, though.
Huh?
I mean, the city's bringing a new storm line to it, so when we figure that out and get it like it's a drain.
And what, uh, talk a little bit about this gutter issue. We don't have gutters designed for the thing?
On your roof?
Yeah. You, you're, you're...
Well, your roof is...
...force says, "The current roof design calls for gutters along the west and the east sides of the roof draining to two exposed PVC downspouts at the south side of the building." So there's no design for those? There's no design for the gutters?
That's correct.
And we use PVC gutters in the city of Granberry?
Well, that's what you have drawn on your existing drawings. We, uh, recognized that when we were pricing the job and said, "Hey, that's not right. We need to figure out, um, what is right and include that amount in our contract." And that's what we did. We sectioned off the roof into six sections with tapered insulation with internal roof drains that go out and then down and underground and dump into, say, a storm line. I mean, the dollars are there to fix that problem, but it's, you know, not fixed.
Yeah. Um, the city is, like I said, we are putting the storm drain in. Actually, then the drains, the roof drains will attach to the storm drain, which will be in the, what is that, the southwest one, right there?
Behind, behind Paradise.
Yes, sir. It's right there by the old, old, uh, hanks. It's kind of, it'll be sitting right in that corner, right there. Yes, sir. Um, and basically, everything's going to tie off the land, it's going to go into it, it's going to be underground, it's going to tie straight to the storm drain. Probably down the lake, the globe.
Speaking of your roof design, is that considered a change order?
Well, it's not our roof design, number one. No, sir, it's not a change order. We saw it prior to the, uh, giving you a GMP and included the correction board in our number.
All right.
So, but... What, the tying in the shell with some sort of a vapor barrier between the old and the new, was that...
Expansion joint?
The expansion joint?
Yeah, we took something with that, too.
So you've got the numbers to correct all that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Parsons, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking at, looking at his letter and, and, uh, understanding all the issues that looks like our design process has not really been quite up to what it should have been. Is there a potential that we could, uh, have a workshop within the next four to five days to spend some hours trying to sort through all of these issues and get them worked out? I mean, can we get your architect in here and, and you sit down with us and we sit down as a council and bring in some theater people and some other people to ma, help us make a, a move on this and get it decided? I mean...
We would, we would highly recommend it, sir.
Apparently, the, the plan that we've been thinking we was, uh, going to work out just really isn't quite the plan we thought.
Well, that's, um, sometimes the case. I mean, uh, unless you, unless you guys are professional builders and architects and engineers, you're counting on people to, uh, get your design, hear what your criteria is, hear what your programming is, and systematically give you a schematic design that complies with that, but with a budget that meets your budget, and then stick, take it to the next level. I'm just citing the AIA playbook, schematics to DD to CDs to permit drawing. And you've got an estimate all along the way that complies with the budget, and you're getting what you want on the drawing. I'm assuming you guys did that and you got what you wrote?
I think we may have stumbled through a few of those steps.
No. Uh, two wrongs don't make a right.
Do a one, one story, Mayor, or, Mr. Scott, how, how would those fly rails work?
I'm sorry?
How would a fly rails work on one story?
Well, that's a good question. You, um, you first start off with the concept of, "Hey, the, the city owns a 1-point million, $1.1 million worth of work back there." Now, can that work be accomplished? Uh, you've got two, two issues. You've got an existing budget, and you've got probably a, uh, city that wants to hurry it along rather quickly. So that may, that makes me think, "Well, wait a minute, is there a system I can change to?" The engineer drew a load-bearing CMU block with a stone veneer on it that, it supports a, uh, not only a steel structure that supports the roof loads, but it also carries a, uh, structural system that carries fly systems. Okay? Now, what you could do, and I'm not saying this is the right way, I'm just saying it's a several options. You could turn it into a steel building with pre-cast. You could turn it into a steel structure with a tilt wall with all, with the masonry per the city's requirements on the veneer of it. You could do several different systems there, which is the most cost-beneficial and which is the most time-beneficial to you? We don't know yet. We don't know whether we're going down that road or not, but that would be one of the things you want to look at is, wait, the money is in the skin. That skin's thirty-six feet high, and there's a pretty good perimeter out on that T that is your money. Take that, drop it where you can, take the money, do what you want to with it, and get on down the road with it. Well.
Mr. Allen, I think what your question was is how do you do the fly system over the stage? And in the first part of what he was talking about, over the stage would remain a two-story. It would have to be at least thirty-five feet high directly over the stage area for the fly rail system to operate.
Here's my.
Everything else would be able to drop.
All right. Here's my point, or my thoughts on it. We've only been working on this for two years, and I do get real frustrated up here. And in back the bathroom, too. But, you know, we've got a donor sitting right here in front, part of the building. It's offered to give a pretty large chunk of money to the Opera House for them to operate with. And what I'm hearing tonight, we're going to have a workshop next week, next month, or next couple of weeks. We're not going to be open this next summer. I don't, I mean, I don't believe we will. And, I mean, you've seen Bill with a little bit of changes that you went through already, that we're going to be off for at least thirty days, maybe sixty. There's always going to be something, like you said. Maybe we'd be better off just to say, you know what, folks? I'm sorry. Go back to drawing board. We budget $1.2 million for this thing, save the taxpayers a million bucks, and open it up next year. And let everybody get out here with their grand plans. And like Mickey said, you know, get some people spinning this thing. We trusted our drawing before we spent over $250,000.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
I just need to remind you that just last meeting, we signed the contract with Scott Tucker Construction in the amount of $2.2 million.
You're correct, Mayor. We did sign it and.
And to proceed.
Those drawings and get started was going to be due by June something or the other.
Well.
And then all this other.
Two-hundred-and-ten days from when he starts.
Under basement stuff got brought in. Nothing but delay, folks. Nothing but delay. We're going to lay it for these business people down here on the square that's been hurt for three years, lay it another year, and let's save the taxpayers a million bucks.
All right, I'm still down here, Mayor.
I'm so glad to get a little bit of necro relief because I was facing that way so much. Mr. Hewlett, go ahead.
Mr. Scott, the thing I'm liking that I hear is just when you talk so much about on the fly, and I like that because it sounds like, you know, we've got a plan, we've got a partial of a plan, and you're exactly right. I'm not the engineer. We're going to hire somebody out here to be the engineer, the construction, and to, we're going to put the money forward to say, this is what we want. And we've got a little bitty plan that is something you can start with, right? And you can go and we can do workshops on the fly as far as that goes. I mean, as we go, but you can get started on this thing is what I'm hearing. And as we go through this thing and we decide that we're going to do whatever we're going to do here, I'm not going to commit to anything right now, but that you can start building on this thing right now.
That's correct.
And that's, you see that all the time. I see it right now in a little project I'm working on. You know, we're doing things on the fly, but we know what we want. This thing went from being a remodel or renovation to, basically, I mean, if it wasn't for the four walls there, we might as well just build an Opera House out here on the land somewhere, freestyle, you know, just start up from the ground floor. But we've got, what we've got right there in the middle of town here, we've got a little place there, we're going to put an Opera House back in, it's gutted down to nothing. And we should have, like Mr. Allen said, took the existing one we had and done a remodel and just went from there and made it really nice, and we'd probably be in it by now, but we're not. So, I like what you're saying with the on the fly, to go with it on the fly, and then as we go forward with this thing, if we've got some changes, we've got some alterations we want to do with it. I mean, I'm taking your word that we can do that, and I think we can. I've seen it done before. And if we have to have a workshop in the middle of it, I don't think we have to prolong this thing and stop the whole project to do a workshop. I think you can start right now. And that's what I want to see. I want to see it started right now, and I want to see whatever we've got to do right now to modify it and get us the Opera House that we want out there, or get us something out there.
I have detected that.
And, I mean, I don't know how difficult that has to be, but I mean.
That's pretty clear.
We can do all that stuff. We can put the, we can do the workshop, we can, and we can get started with it.
That's right. Listen, I see both, I mean, I see both sides. I mean, we've been monkeying with it two years and.
All projects that I've seen get a lot of on-the-fly work.
Well, you got to.
It sounds like you're accustomed to it.
I am, and you got to start with a.
And we have that.
We have to start with a positive attitude and say, okay, who can, can we do this?
But we have, we have a basic, we have a basic layout, and I think you're talking about modifying that somewhat, and you can have that, it sounds to me like you can have it less than two weeks, the way you've answered that question. So, I mean, we can get going on that thing, and you can start doing some work right now. For instance, on the roof.
Yes, sir.
The roof's not going to change.
Well, we're thinking about, quite frankly, I think the best, we've been through two or three architects that have told us they can't meet the schedule, so they're not being considered. We have talked to several engineers that say they cannot meet the schedule. We have talked to our low mechanical and electrical contractors that have the ability to design it themselves and probably get you the best bang for the buck and do it as fast as possible, that are quite accustomed to doing this kind of thing. Design assist with a stamp at the end of it on your side of the fence or my side doesn't really matter. What we're considering is getting the, anything that spins or turns or whatever, like an air-conditioning unit, off of the theater roof. I mean, ultimately, there's going to be some acoustic qualities to that thing, and we're thinking, you know, how can this be improved? Well, move the air hammer, put sound curbs up there, do something where somebody sitting on the chair is not complaining about air noise. So, there's, you know, issues like that all the time. And we think that the best way is for, to build a team that can say, we can do it. And like I say, we're leaning towards mechanical, electrical contractors with engineering stands to provide that consulting work.
And that's what I want. I mean, if it was me, I want you to do that, to take charge of that and be the guy that's in charge. And if I see something, if I go in there and see something I want changed, then we're going to be discussing that, and we're going to do it on the fly.
Been doing it twenty-seven years, yes, sir.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, and I'm okay with that.
You did. You did a tougher job than this one.
Mr. Kowalski?
Let's get together and get these items off your letter and get to moving. That's all the way to work. I mean, you know, we've got, we've got too many issues in the beginning that we need to, before we start flying, we need to get some of these issues ironed out. I mean, we did, we, our single footprint building of 5,000 feet is now turned into 12,000 square foot.
We turned in on the original RFQ of your go. Yes, sir. It's completely changed.
Mr. Kowalski, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Bill, on the, you talked about different options for that, the building construction on the backside.
Yes, sir.
If we were to schedule a workshop to where you would have options for us with costs, how soon could you have that for us?
Give me a, probably tomorrow, could figure it out, and Thursday, Thursday, Friday kind of thing.
Okay.
We'd have to post it. We couldn't have that workshop till Monday, the earliest we could have it would be Monday.
Those are three days there. Why?
He was asking, he asked him, he could do it.
I didn't pass the, I didn't pass the regulation requiring that, but it is a state regulation.
So, we could have the numbers if they're savings? That way, we could decide what we want to do further beyond the scope that exists right now?
I think you're doing, look at the systems, the structural systems, possibilities of what you have, how much it costs, what are your options, what do you get, what do you, you know, what do you get out of time-wise and what do you get out of it cost-wise?
Okay, and then I would assume that we could assemble some other opinions from the theater population to give us insight to what we need and what we don't need. So, I would, I certainly would be in favor of a workshop that would, that would have those two elements, Bill being there, any suggestions by the council members, and any professional types that could speak to us to lead us in the right direction.
I'm in favor of workshops, and just like I talked about, I think we were going to have workshops all the way through this thing. I really do, but I think we get started on it, and if we got to have a workshop on the popcorn machine, we'll do it.
Well, that's typically, that's what a weekly meeting is.
No, we're going to, that's right.
And I anticipate, moving forward with this, we will have periodic updates on a regular basis, something that I think we were left out of previously, and I look forward to those. So, entertain a motion to schedule a workshop or something, gentlemen?
Can I ask Mr. Scott one more question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen. Just don't hurt him. Just don't hurt him.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott, my best. Got one question. Mr. Hewlett was saying, you know, we get started on the roof and this and that, and he said, yes, sir, get started immediately. When will you get, have your bond and your permit school?
Um, it's usually a forty-eight-hour process. You send them the contract and they, we, the bond comes from a surety that's delivered to an insurance company. Our agent comes there.
Do you have them by Monday?
Oh, yeah.
And the permit?
I don't know that.
The permit comes from the city?
Building permits comes from the city.
Well, I'm asking it. Good luck.
We know how, how things work with the city right now.
Well, you know, and what we're, what we're contemplating and talking about doing, we will need, the building official in our line of work is a very key individual. We run everything through them. They look at every process we do, and we're considered them a valued partner. We have to do that right. That's just going to happen.
Sure.
So, that.
Only reason I asked that, Mr. Scott, was that I'll make a motion to have workshop Monday, you know, no problem. But what good's it going to do us to have all this if y'all not ready to go at that time?
Well, you'd, I'll tell you. Well, I'll tell you what I would glean from that workshop is that I can get a lot of answers of which way this, you guys want to go. And then, once we know that, we already know that, we already know that you want to go as fast as possible. We already know it's a 2.2 that ain't going up. Okay, so, given those parameters, okay, what can we change along these lines of what you're requesting to change? And where's the give and take on it?
But if you go in and get a permit from the city, the bond's the same way. You're going to say, I want a bond for 2.2 million, regardless of what the plans look like, right?
Typically, the chief, the CBO, the chief building official wants any revisions with a stamp on them. So, we would probably be burning up his fax machine with, hey, here's what we're really going to do.
But you can always do that later on. Any changes, like you said, there can be changes later. All I'm saying is, can we count on you getting the permit, the bond by Monday, and then the permits next week?
No. No, you can't count on me getting the permit.
I'm not saying apply for a permit.
I can apply for a permit at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. He has to submit plans so we can permit it.
Yeah. I did, I did. I have talked to the individual, and he said, yeah, they're ready to go.
Who said that?
I can't repeat it, I can't remember his name. He appeared to be the plans examiner that knew something about the guy.
Oh, here with the city, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, you're waiting on the city?
No, we haven't, um.
I think he's waiting on us to say what we're doing, and that would be a result of a workshop, gentlemen.
Here's the deal, you could take the plans of Brian Gaff and give him, get a permit. You can always have a change.
That's what's being submitted, I believe.
Yeah, and it can always be changed.
Yes, sir.
If they don't get them permitted to you, talk to Mr. Wayne there.
But, Bill, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Help me understand that after the city council moved forward, two weeks ago, or, yeah, two weeks ago, to give you the contract and to move forward with that, help me understand why we find ourselves at this place?
Because I kept saying, why can't we change this, and why can't we look at this and have some options, if you'll remember?
Bingo.
There was a request to analyze some enhancements to leak some might.
Then I think we got to have a process that when someone offers up a different approach, you know, it needs to go through at the city council meeting, because anyone could offer up options.
That's what's before you as item number four. The item we are talking about is those discussions.
Yes, but I'm talking about in-between council meetings. That's, that's what I'm hearing, is that's what, that's what stalled this, was, you know, you had, you had the direction to go ahead by the council, yet you didn't. And I just want to be sure we have a process so that doesn't continue to happen.
Well, you'd have to dig on into the AIA contract that you have, the condition.
Gentlemen, can I just take control again and suggest that we have a special meeting on Monday? Monday, November, I mean, December seventeenth, to discuss this item, in other words, postpone this to a special meeting on December seventeenth, along with a workshop? It would be open to the public, yes. Why would it not? We're, it's posted. I'm sorry. Are we having a discussion with you in the audience? Well, once again, I'd like to suggest that we have a special meeting on Monday, the seventeenth, where we can talk about this in some sort of a workshop, and also put this one item to where we can clarify which direction we are going and address any changes at that time.
What item are you talking about, Mayor?
The Opera House, Mr. Allen.
I understand how you're talking about that.
Very plenty, Mr. Allen. Very plenty.
Yes, I would, I'll make a motion that we have a workshop on next Monday. I'd like to hear from the other council members on what time. I'd like it to be, you know, earlier in the day, and we stay as long as it takes to get this thing knocked out. And if that, so, it's ten o'clock work in the morning, council members.
And we're not going to specify how long of a workshop it's going to be. It's going to be discuss and have a workshop on this particular item and take any action.
I'd rather say do it at six o'clock, and that way gives everybody a chance, it's working, to be here. That's right with you, Gary, I'll second that motion.
Well, just everyone come prepared, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, you're going to do it in two hours? I think you need to start about eleven in the morning, because I've got about a seven or eight-hour project.
About six in the morning.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
He's going to be here.
Whenever I look at the letter that he sent us with the issues that are, that he's found just in this short period of time, I mean, it's amazing what, what we've got to try to accomplish in a short.
Yeah, but you can scratch half of them off anyway.
I've been out of here a lot of nights at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock even, and I'm looking for the taxpayers' mayors. All I'm saying is, I'd like them to have an opportunity to be here.
Are they going to be inputting information to work on this workshop? Are we getting information from them as a general public? I don't understand why you want to wait till the end of the day and get into a midnight session, whereas we can start early in the day and get this thing figured out.
You're saying that the citizens are not going to be involved?
Some of them are. We're going to ask for theater consultants. I heard Mr. Kowalski suggest that. Mr. Kowalski suggested that we get an input.
And Mr. Kowalski did, and I'm saying, who's going to go figure out who these people are we want out here?
Well, I'm sure as hell not.
I'm sure as hell not.
Well, then that's going to make for a very short meeting, huh?
Council, I say we get started at ten.
Council, this is where, this is where we're at right now. We can't even make a command decision on when we want to meet someplace, you know, and we're trying to build this place.
Thanks, man.
Let's just, you know, first of all, first of all, without the workshop, you're going to start, right? You're starting already. I mean, you're starting without the workshop. This workshop has nothing to do with the roof or things like that. A lot of things that he can do right now.[1735.11] Permits, all that good stuff, right? And we'll try to decide on a workshop.
We've got a, we've got a two- or three-page letter from the man that says he started on it.
I know. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I agree.
And he's looking for architects and engineers to get on board on the fast track.
You're good, so...
Well, so anyway, back to the meeting. Monday, December seventeenth, ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m. Get started on this. Special meeting for this one item. Discuss and consider, and address any changes.
And then would you like to set up at six o'clock that night for people to come, and we'll make the vote or the decision, and talk about that at six o'clock?
Don't make it any more difficult.
Well, Mr. Allen wants the public involved, and I do too, so what?
All right, then, how about we call it at two o'clock in the afternoon, 'cause I know it's gonna take us till six?
Ten, fine.
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
Now we're back to ten a.m.?
I'm happy with ten a.m.
So we start it.
All right. If you could, D., please post a special meeting for ten a.m. on Monday, December seventeenth. We don't need to take a vote. I can call a special meeting. Yeah, as the mayor, I can call a special meeting for, yeah, ten a.m., December seventeenth. And as a result, this item will be postponed, so motion to postpone this. Item number four till December seventeenth. Anybody?
So moved.
Mr. Parsons makes a motion. Needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Your vote.
It's a two-to-two. I'm in favor of having the meeting on the seventeenth, at ten a.m. Thank you. That passes. This time...
Before we move on, could we make sure we ask the city manager to make sure that we have the, and Mr. Scott, to make sure that we have the necessary professional people here to help us move forward? Architect, engineer, A.C. guy, if you think we need him, roofer if you need him.
ADA.
Real prints.
Real prints? Yeah, that would help. We'd just love to have a copy of prints to look at, since we haven't seen them since the beginning of this thing, so...
At this time, I now declare that Granbury City Council is convened into open session that all members, except for Laurel Perkel, are present. The City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with an attorney. We shall return. Open session. Mr. Hewlett?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the compromise settlement agreement, cause number C-two-zero-one-one-four-oh-six, and authorize the mayor to sign upon receipt of the changes.
Do I have a second? That's gonna require a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, please note for the record that Mr. Allen was in the nay on that. Motion does pass, though. And we pick up where we left off at item number five of our deliberation agenda. Consider and approve a resolution acknowledging financial support for the A.P. Gordon House as a visitor center and sidewalk connectivity to historic sites, museums, and parks project. Council members, uh, we recently found that there were some Text dot, uh, transportation enhancement program out there that, uh, basically is an eighty-twenty match, uh, thanks to, I believe it was Angela, Andra Cryer, that, uh, found this. Uh, it actually goes hand-in-hand with, uh, a thought process that passed by us, uh, about the A.P. Gordon House and utilizing it as a visitor center, and that, uh, it could also tie in with our hike-and-bike master plan, and it does concur with that. And we just received some notice from Text Dot that we have the green light for Phase Two of the hike-and-bike trail. And so this is all falling very well into place. Uh, Mr. McKethan, you wanna address this as to how much money this might cost the city?
Yes, well, as you just said, we just got approved for another seven-hundred thousand dollars to complete Phase Two. Our portion was a hundred and eighty thousand, and we had budgeted that in the, in the, in last year, in this year's budget. So we had put a hundred thousand this year and a hundred thousand next year. So, uh, that's another grant that we have now landed. Uh, the staff has, at this point, has landed almost a million and a half dollars of grants in the last year and a half. So we're getting our portion of money from Text Dot. Uh, they're getting real familiar with writing us checks. Now, what we've done with this coming up, this was new money that came on board that, uh, we worked with Preserve Granbury. Preserve Granbury's been very helpful, helping us write this grant, as well as our own staff. And this is the completion of the hike-and-bike trail all the way, uh, to the Conference Center. You know, we'll hook into where we currently have some trail there at the Conference Center. And so it'll complete the master plan. One point eight million total project. Our portion will be nearly, well, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, but, uh, Text Dot's portion will be right at one million four-hundred, let's see, what is it? One million four-hundred-seventy-eight thousand. So, assuming that we land this, this will be another million five. So if we're able to land this, and we have met with Text Dot. Text Dot liked this project whenever, uh, we met with them. It was exactly the kind of project that this money was set out for. And they were looking for a transportation project that would merge in with a visitor center. And if you remember, one of the criteria that we set aside whenever we took over Langdon, uh, Center, was that we could make the Garden House into a visitor center. So it worked perfect for us. It really links all the museums that we just recently established, which is the Bridge Center Museum, uh, even the Ramey House with the Dow Museum. We're gonna run it over to the square, so it'll hook into the square as well. This is a very good project that would save the taxpayers, assuming that we believe our master plan and are supportive of our master plan. This will save the taxpayer one point four million dollars, and we won't have to pay four-hundred thousand for a million-eight-dollar project, one point eight million-dollar project. So the staff recommends this, and we think we should go forward with it. What this proposal needs, though, they've come back and said, fine, we're interested in maybe giving you the money, but we need a resolution from the council saying they're supportive of it. And the staff's asking to be supportive of this project.
And with that being said, we do have a resolution before us. It's part of your packet regarding the A.P. Gordon House, uh, visitor center and sidewalk project. It is a financial commitment by the city to invest some three, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars uh, in order to receive a one point five million dollars on, towards this project. And it sorta goes hand-in-hand, as, uh, Mr. McKethan said, with our existing hike-and-bike trail and its final completion phase. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt said resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen. Needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this?
I got a question for Wayne. Somebody ahead of me. Wayne, I read in here where it said that, uh, the reimbursement would be, could be up to eighty percent. Now, does that mean we're already, they've already committed, and we're gonna get the eighty percent? Or could it be that we wouldn't get the full eighty percent, and we'd end up paying a little bit more than the twenty percent?
Well, my understanding is they're committing to the eighty percent.
Okay, because it reads, you know, that we would be eligible for up to, obviously, but we have to make, put the minimum of twenty percent down anyway.
Well, what we're committing to is the three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. If, in fact, it comes back differently, and we don't have a grant yet.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
So all they're, all we're committing to is that we support three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, twenty percent. If, in fact, it comes back different, we'll have to come back to you.
But, okay, so if it comes back different, then we have to either get our money back or reduce the twenty percent, I mean, increase the twenty percent?
We'll spend any money until we know what the terms are.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted. Yeah, okay.
Now, this is a reimbursement.
That's what we're going after.
We'll flow, I mean, once we know and we commit to it, yes, we will put the money forward and get reimbursed, like we do in all, if we have another.
So we're going after the max. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
And the monies can be utilized to renovate the Gordon House and do some repairs and stuff like that, so it's all for the good. Uh, any further, uh, questions? All in favor of said resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Takes us to item number six. Consider and approve an airport hangar lease contract with Air Evac, EMS Incorporated. Air Evac has agreed to move its regional maintenance facility to the Granbury Airport and lease a one-hundred-foot-by-one-hundred-foot airport hangar, which is planned for construction. The facility will employ nine to ten employees with a average payroll of sixty to seventy thousand annually for each employee. The contract is for three, five-year terms. And, gentlemen, I wanna point out in your packet, there's a typo. The amount is for thirteen-hundred-and-forty-two dollars per month, which is actually the cost of the financing for the hangar construction. Uh, with that being said, uh, we're gonna let, uh, Mr. McKethan pick up the pieces where we have a few more details coming forward.
Yes, uh, Texas Air Evac has signed the contract. It is sitting in our office, ready for the mayor, if it's approved by the council. Ready for the, uh, mayor to sign it. Uh, you know, it's perceived that this would be, since there's no cost to the taxpayer, and they will pay the amount of the financing, and the jobs that will be created, nine to ten jobs averaging sixty to seventy thousand, this is a good earnings for, uh, employees to work there, 'cause, uh, helicopter technicians make pretty good money. Uh, it's a tough job. So we're looking at this. Also, there's an opportunity. They haven't promised it, but, uh, they are looking at putting a training center, and we've worked with them about a location where that might go on the airport as well. It's just a possibility at this point. They haven't promised anything, but it is interesting. So we feel like this is, once again, an economic development project that would be of an asset to the city, and the staff recommends approval.
And I would like to point out that the starting rate is thirteen-hundred-and-forty-two per month. It does have an adjustment over a period of time. With that being said, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve a lease agreement between Air Evac EMS Incorporated and the City of Granbury for a term of five years with two consecutive five-year renewal options for a one-hundred-foot-by-one-hundred-foot hangar, along with two parking pads at the Granbury Regional Airport, at a beginning rate of thirteen-hundred-and-forty-two dollars per month, and authorize the mayor to sign.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Couch. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this?
Mayor, I got two.
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
It says completed by July thirteenth. Uh, I think we already signed the contract with the construction capability, correct?
Yes.
Is there any clause in there saying they gotta be built by the end of the year?
Well, we expect it to be finished sometime in April, okay? But here's the key. The half-million dollars that we received as a grant from Texas Air, uh, from, uh, Text Dot Aviation, uh, Text Dot Aviation does not move as fast as our construction, you know? And so there's a possibility that the taxiways to get to it could be as long as July. We don't think so. It's a helicopter, so it doesn't really impact it.
Yeah.
But we put it in a contract, because they were wanting a date when they could have all the facilities. And so we looked at, we think Text Dot Aviation will be through prior to that as well. But we sort of went out an extra six months, you know, six months, saying, we just didn't wanna come to a contract that, uh, was not, that was any risk at all, so...
Okay.
We think everything's gonna be completed around April. Gary, let me ask you that. Would you confirm that?
Uh, yes, sir. I think that's a fair assessment. As you recall, we, when we went down to accept the, uh, the grant at the commission, we, uh, emphasized the fact that we would like to have this thing completed by the end of March, which was pretty aggressive. So, um, I think that in the March and April timeframe is acceptable.
And are they willing to do it without the pad there, if necessary?
There is an out in the clause.
I know. That's what I'm reading. They got a thirty-day out.
Well, that's why we put it in July.
Oh, you think we're in good shape?
We think we're in good shape.
I'm glad you're here.
Yeah. Now, let me say, we are, this company's gonna be maintaining helicopters from Oklahoma, Arkansas, New Mexico, and Texas. And so there's gonna be people flying in here, using our hotels, using, eating at our restaurants and shopping, 'cause the maintenance may go overnight in many cases. So this is a, you know, this is a moneymaker and sales tax as well. We fill in hotel occupancy tax, so...
Any other discussion?
I got a question for Gary.
All right.
Real quick. Uh, I noticed it handles three of them inside. Now, what happens, I don't know if this has ever happened or not, where you get a, an abundance of them. Say you got six of them wanna come in here that's got some problems. Do we just say, no, we can't handle them, or?
Well, that would be their decision, but we do have, uh...
Tie down?
A ramp, uh, in front of, uh, the hangar itself that will, uh, is thirty, forty-five by, uh, a hundred feet wide, and, uh, you can park airplanes out there. They'll be moving them, they're on skids, and they'll be moving them on, uh, on wheels that they put underneath the skids. And so they can move these things all around. They can put several in the corner and things of that nature.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank Air Evac and, uh, people from the hospital that came to support this item.
Thank you, guys. It's a good benefit for our city. We appreciate you being here. Having faith in our city to bring that to this regional area. Thank you very much. Item number seven. Consider and approve closure of streets from eight a.m. on Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen, through till eight p.m. on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, for the annual Granbury Wine Walk. This is a street closure for South Houston Street within the one-block section between Pearl Street and Bluff Street, as well as the closing of the alleyway between West Bridge Street and West Pearl Street. And that's the West Alleyway between West Bridge and Pearl. And this is for the annual Wine Walk Festival. I hope you've had a chance to, uh, see that as it's, I believe it's in its third, maybe fourth year now, fourth year. And, uh, I think the alleyway has become a great success for everybody over on that side. So with that being said, entertain a motion to approve street closure of South Houston between Pearl and Bluff Streets, along with the alleyway between West Bridge Street and West Pearl Streets on Friday, April twenty-sixth, starting at eight a.m. through till Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at eight p.m. for the Granbury Wine Walk Festival.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett. Second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eight. Consider and award a construction contract for the Hewlett Park Waterwell. Gentlemen, this came out a little bit late, so you'll see it out there in front of you. You have items eight and nine information on your dais. Uh, we had two bidders come forward for the Hewlett Park Waterwell. Central Texas Waterwell came in at one-oh-two K, and Dowell Well Service came in at one-oh-nine point five K. Uh, it's been determined in an open bid, that was opened up on December sixth at eleven o'clock, that the low bid would be Central Texas Waterwell. With that, I'd entertain a motion to award a construction contract with Central Texas Waterwell in the amount of one-hundred-and-two thousand dollars for the Hewlett Park Waterwell as a part of the city's effort to implement additional groundwater well sites.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Allen. Needs a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any further discussion? All in favor of awarding a construction contract, authorize the mayor to sign it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us up to item number nine. Consider and award a construction contract for the Hewlett Park Pump Station. This is in conjunction with what we just, uh, heard about on item number eight. Uh, we had five bidders on this one. The low bid came in at two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. It was A-plus Waterworks. And with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to award a construction contract with A-plus Waterworks in the amount of two, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-nine for the Hewlett Park Pump Station as part of the city's effort to implement additional groundwater sites.
So moved.
I'm gonna give that to Mr. Hewlett as well. Needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any discussion regarding this one?
We're about to discuss, can be out of, as a mayor?
I'm not familiar. A-plus Waterworks, do you know where they're out of? Arlington?
They're out of, uh...
Arlington, Texas?
Thanks.
Any other questions? All in favor of awarding a construction contract with A-plus Waterworks and authorize the mayor to sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Item number 10, discuss and consider a lease agreement with Airport Building Limited to unify into one document their existing leases on several properties located at the Granbury Regional Airport. What has happened over a period of time is this business was doing business as Sky Tech. They started off in one structure, wound up expanding into more structures, and then expanded again. Their name has now changed to Airport Building Limited, and they would like to unify all of their various leases into a single document to allow them a better sense of making their annual and monthly payments.
One clarification.
Okay, thank you.
The parent company is Airport Building Limited. They still do business as Sky Tech.
Oh, that's very good to know. So, Sky Tech is still in business, it's the parent company. But what we're doing is unifying the contracts under the parent company, Airport Building Limited. And this is a contract lease agreement for a term of 25 years with an optional five-year extension, and it's for approximately 36,000 square feet of property located at the Granbury Regional Airport, and it's a starting rate of $453.03 a square foot. So, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve a lease agreement with Airport Building Limited and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Let me add one comment for that, is that we have upgraded it to market value. They had signed these contracts five, how long ago, it was back, how many years back? 97.
97.
Yeah.
Was their original lease, and then 2003 was the second one.
Yeah, and so even one of them was like 5 cents.
One, the first one was 5 cents a square foot, the second one was 13 cents a square foot, and we've negotiated to 15 cents a square foot.
So, all of them have been raised to 15 cents, which is what we perceive to be market right now.
Thank you for that additional info. That's all about the money. So, with that, entertain a motion to approve a lease agreement with Airport Building Limited for 25 years at the, for property located at the Granbury Regional Airport, and authorize the mayor to sign.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion or questions regarding this motion?
How did you say, Wayne, y'all determined a 15-cent per square foot?
The going market right now is somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 to 16 cents a square foot, and we met in the middle. From my experiences, we've had leasehold, land leaseholds, a lot lower than that and a lot higher than that, but this is a good medium and is reflective of the airports in the region.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Need to get that runway done with all that work you're doing out there, Gary. Shoot.
Takes us to item number 11. Consider appointments to the city boards. As has been said before, we've been advertising for boards and applicants since October of this year, and we've invited several interested parties. You have a list in your packet of the highlighted in yellow, these are applicants that are being returned by current board members, and we have received all those. You can look through the list, there's quite a few. There are a few that we did not get back in time before we went to the packets being sent out. So, with that being said, I'd entertain a motion from you guys to re-up some of these people. Should we take it by the
Yeah.
By the board?
Yeah.
I think so as well. We'll start off with the airport board. As you can see, highlighted in yellow, we have four applicants that have re-upped their current board members. I'll start off with entertaining a motion to reappoint all four of those. That's Rich Chiapi, Paula Holder, Jackie Vaughn, and Terry Strange.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. That's going to leave us with Mr. Hedrick, and also, we have a vacancy as of October 15th from Ms. Hamilton resigning. And do we have any nominations for additional new nominations for airport board from anybody?
A councilperson.
Can a councilperson be on it?
Doesn't say it on the deal, but I just wanted.
I don't think there's a conflict of interest, but you're saying no? One thing we do look for on the airport board is somebody associated with the airport industry or a pilot, and with that being said, I don't know of any applications that we have before us, so how about we address the vacancies at a future council? So, let's move on to building standards, plumbing adjustments, and appeals. As you'll notice, there are four individuals currently on that board. Entertain a motion to re-up Bob White, Robert Young, Richard Heiser, and Terry Taylor to the building standards board. We have a motion by Mr. Allen, need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any further discussion on these guys? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Takes us to the cemetery board. Lamita Kennon and Bill Wiley would like to be reappointed to that. Entertain a motion to reappoint them.
So moved.
I'm going to give that to Gary Couch, needs a second. Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any discussion on it? All in favor of appointing Lamita Kennon and Bill Wiley back to the cemetery board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. That leaves us with a vacancy. Mr. C.D. McReynolds resigned on 11/14/2012, and all we know right now is that another member, Burton Berks, is ill at this time, and so we'll address that at a future council. Historic Preservation Commission, Sarah Baker, who is filling a temporary seat, her term, she was newly elected and appointed to that, and Carrie Young, who has served also in that same capacity, they would like to both be reappointed. Entertain a motion to reappoint Sarah Baker and Carrie Young.
Hello.
I'm going to give that to Mr. Hewlett, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All in favor of Sarah Baker and Carrie Young being reappointed to Historic Preservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. You'll notice Tony Hedges has a question mark by him. We do have a new applicant in your packet. You received one from Carol Lippincott. She is interested in serving on this board, and the staff has vetted her to be worthy or within the scope of the Historic Preservation Commission guidelines. So, with that, I'd entertain a motion for Carol Lippincott to replace Tony Hedges on the historic commission.
Mayor, is Tony willing to get off?
We never received back an application from him. He's been contacted on multiple occasions.
Okay, I just seen the application here from there since 2011.
Yes, sir. We didn't receive a new one.
Well, I'll make a motion to nominate Carol.
We have a motion by Gary Couch for Carol Lippincott to serve, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. On the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board, Mr. McKethen?
Yes, James Jarrett has submitted his application and has been vetted.
So, Mr. Jarrett and Mr. Hackett is also willing to re-serve on that board. I have to call attention to one issue that concerns me with Mr. Hackett, and that is, they are, as we saw, there was a Knox Ranch issue, and I don't think Mr. Hackett was thinking in the best interest of the city when we were talking about that, but maybe he was. I mean, that's his take.
I had several people talk to me about that, Mayor.
It may be a conflict of interest.
I even questioned it, disputed about it.
Yeah.
It was a conflict of interest. I know hard feelings, Ken, I'm looking in the eye, but I think you ought to step down for a year or two, and because anything that happens to Knox Ranch, it's going to be towed right back in their face.
Does the attorney look at it?
Sir?
Does the attorney look at it? I mean...
Well, I mean, he qualifies to serve on the Muab. There's no question. I mean, he is a property owner within the city limits. He does, he does pay taxes, he does buy utilities, he has some knowledge about all that stuff, but we don't have any other applications. I asked about that prior to the meeting, if we even had any more applications for Municipal Utility Advisory Board.
Since James has decided to get back on the last minute, Jarrett?
James Jarrett.
Yeah, we go ahead and table those two, or those nominations till the next meeting.
Well, they'll continue to serve until such time that they're replaced.
Sure.
As is the norm for any kind of a board. I don't know that it's going to help us find anybody out there that's going to serve, but
You're not.
But if that's what you'd like to do, is postpone this till sometime in January, we can do that.
That'd be fine.
No, Mr. Hackett, I think we're just going to postpone till January and go from there.
You're still until January?
Yeah, you're still serving. You're still serving until you're replaced. So, entertain a motion, I guess, to postpone any reappointments to the Municipal Utility Advisory Board until the January, let me look at my calendar. The 22nd meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen to postpone till the 22nd, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye. I heard one. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I heard one. Can, can we get, raise the hand, all those in favor, please, raise your hand. We have two to postpone. That means there's two for an abstention, so raise your hands if you oppose the postponement. That's two in favor of postponing, so a tiebreaker, get another vote tonight. I'm going to say, let's go ahead and do it this meeting and not postpone. So, with that being said, we're not postponing. With that being said, all in favor of nominating Ken Hackett and James Jarrett to serve on the Municipal Utility Advisory Board?
I don't believe you can.
Oh, I need a motion. Entertain a motion to reappoint Ken Hackett and James Jarrett to the Municipal Utility Advisory Board.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Couch, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? We had a little bit. Calling for the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note that there was one nay from Mr. Allen. Motion passes for reappointment. Brings us down to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. You'll notice that we have five members that, current members that would like to be reappointed. They are, and pardon me if I get this wrong, I think it's Joni Snyder, Barbara Boozer, Kathy Cuban, Bev Groves, Jean Kate. All of them would like to be reappointed. Entertain a motion to reappoint those individuals.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Couch, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion regarding any of these individuals? All in favor of reappointing Joni Snyder, Barbara Boozer, Kathy Cuban, Bev Groves, and Jean Kate to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and it still leaves us with one vacancy, as Marty Edwards resigned as of October 5th, 2012. Takes us to Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll notice that we have three individuals that would like to be reappointed. That is Stephen Ellis, Rita Kay, and Eddie Hewitt. Entertain a motion to reappoint those three individuals.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Couch, needs a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. We do have two vacancies. We have three applications, a Tim Hallman, and a Barry Howells, and a Ronnie Wan Jr. Accepting nominations, please.
I nominate Barry.
We have a nomination for Barry Howells.
I nominate.
Go ahead, any other nomination?
I'll nominate Ronnie.
We have a nomination for Ronnie Wan Jr. Any other nominations?
I don't want Tim to be left out, so I'm going to nominate him, we'll see what comes out of the votes.
Okay, so we have all three of them being nominated for three seats, I'm sorry, for two seats, and one of these is a vacancy that is a result of somebody leaving the city limits. The other one is because Gary Couch got elected to the city council, so these individuals will serve out the terms of those two seats.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that whichever one doesn't win on this one, be appointed to the zoning board of adjustments?
Wow. That would help fill a void.
What if they go one of the other?
Yeah, they didn't plan.
We'll have to have them vet, but we can offer that up to them in another application request. So, with, we've got three nominations, let's fill two vacancies. All those in favor of Tim Hallman, raise your hands. I have two. All those in favor of Barry Howells, raise your hands. We have four Barry Howells is automatically in there. All those in favor of Ronnie Wan, raise your hands. We have two. Oh, now it's...
I nominate Tim, Mr. Hewlett.
Now, then, it comes down to me to pick between Tim Hallman and Ronnie Wan Jr. as a tiebreaker. I'm going to go with Tim Hallman. So, with that being said, entertain a motion to appoint Tim Hallman and Barry Howells to fill the vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We, no, I need your first.
First.
I need your first.
I made the motion.
No, I need your first, so the first goes to Mr. Hewlett, needs a second. I think that went to Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? All those in favor, you have discussion, yes?
Shouldn't they, shouldn't we separate those out?
You mean, is, which seat they fill? Is that what you think?
Nomination individually.
Okay, never mind. I got it.
Okay. So, with that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries to appoint Tim Hallman and Barry Howells to fill the vacancies on planning and zoning. Tourism Advisory Board, Entertainment Venue, we currently have a vacancy. I don't believe we received any applications to fill that void, so with that, we'll have to put that off until another day. On the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have two individuals that currently serve that would like to be reappointed, Ernestine Schugart and Eileen Kate. Entertain a motion to reappoint those two individuals.
So moved.
Give that to Gary Couch, second to Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. As for the vacancy, I would like to make mention that we have Tom Baker, and who is serving as an alternate on this board, and I would like to suggest that we nominate Tom Baker to the full-time position on this to fill the vacancy, and then we can address somebody else to fill the part-time alternate role.
What board is that, Mayor?
This is on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Tom Baker currently fills an alternate seat on that. His term, if pointed to this vacancy, would actually expire in 2014.
And Tom wants that?
Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker? He says he would, he would serve full-time.
No extra money over.
So, with that being said, I still need to entertain a motion to appoint Tom Baker. We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any other discussion regarding it? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Wow. I think we did it, gentlemen. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.